It is Thursday, August 3rd. I would like to call our school committee meeting to order. This meeting is being broadcast and recorded by WCTV and audio recorded by Jamie Wixton. Would you please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, welcome back everyone to our first in-person meeting since the end of the last school year. Order up on the agenda, the first item is public participation. Seeing no members of the Wareham Public present, we will move on to good news. Anyone have good news they'd like to share? Joyce?
I just, I see that work has begun on the roof at the middle school, which is great news, right? There's lots of planning that went into that project, so it's nice to see that it's happening during the summer.
Thank you.
And the boiler.
Well, I was wondering about that, but I can't see it, so.
So that is.
Is that underway also?
Boiler project is moving right along also.
According to plan.
According to plan.
Excellent, excellent.
April?
I read in the Wareham Week that there were a lot of former Wareham graduates that have all made the dean's list at their prospective colleges. And I think that's just, it's great to still acknowledge the kids that are, that are doing well, that are coming out of our district. So I just want to congratulate all those students who made their dean's list.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to item number three, minutes of the meeting. So we have, I believe it's six meetings from December 1st, 15th, January 5th and 19th, February 2nd and February 16th. We have these in our packet. Did anyone have any questions or edits or corrections on any of those minutes?
I vote to accept as a packet, oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, Jeff?
I'm trying to remember which one it was, but my wife wants me to make sure that the record shows that she wasn't present for one of them. Ah, yes.
Is there an S on mister?
Yes. This would have been the minutes of February 20, February 2nd, says Mrs.
All right, we will change that. Any other corrections, edits, questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to accept?
Motion to accept all minutes with the correction noted by Jeff as a consent agenda.
Seconded.
Seconded, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, 5-0-0.
Does his wife get a vote on that one? No.
We move next to the superintendent's goals, which is the main purpose of tonight's meeting, to go over the proposed goals for this upcoming school year. So Dr. DeAndrea.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Nice to see everyone. A little of the summer. It's been a busy summer so far, lots of work going on at the schools. As noted earlier, the two projects, custodians are cleaning the buildings, we're doing a lot of hiring, and getting ready. Summer school's been going on, and that's been going well. And we'll be ready for the school year before, it'll be here before you know it. Okay, so you should have received in your packet a copy of my proposed goals. I developed these goals with assistance from the evaluation subcommittee, Joyce and Jeff. I've shared these with the administrative team. And tonight I submit them to the school committee for your consideration. Would you like me to kind of walk through them?
Yeah, maybe just so, at least in general terms, sure.
Okay, so the first goal on page one is a student learning goal, which we had identified as a two-year goal. The first year was where I met with stakeholders. I looked at data from the district in many different areas. And from all that information that I was able to accumulate, I developed the action plan that was part of my final report at the end of last school year. And year two of this student learning goal will be for this school year. And that is the implementation of that action plan. And I included the bulleted items that show some of the pieces of that action plan. The first being the addition of the skillful teacher, making that, that professional development a mandatory part of a teacher's first three years in the district. That's something that we will have to work with the union on. Continue with our empowering writers training. That's part of our PD course selection. Create the IB task force and have a recommendation by December. We're going to continue to monitor student attendance and student discipline. We have made significant improvement from the 20, 2021 school year. And the 2020, 22, 23 school year was good. So we want to continue to provide those supports and incentives to our students and, and keep that attendance rate up and discipline rate down. The workshop on managing anxiety I have in red, you probably noticed. And that was because we had that all set, thanks to work Andrea did. But when we had to change the date for the PD day in March, we had to, we lost that presenter. But we are working on filling that gap and hopefully we'll have someone to do that. And so then underneath that will be the evidence for completion. You know, that the skillful teacher will be part of the contract, which we, we have unit aid negotiations this year. The empowering writers' participation and dates, the recommendation from the IB task force, 93% attendance rate and a reduction in suspension. So that would be my student learning goal for this year. Stop for questions there.
Ben?
I was just curious, you said the attendance rate of 93%? What was it? Just do we know what the is or whatever?
Right now, so I don't have the final, final numbers for this year, but it is around 93%. So it was prior to that, it was in the 80s. So our goal last year was to get it up to 93. And when I wrote this, I hadn't really known it, know it exactly where it was. So we want to at least maintain that or improve it.
Okay.
I would say 93 would be the minimum.
Yeah, again, and just to follow up on that, with a lot of the problems that the schools were having, or at least that the principals were mentioning, is 93 a good number? Is that an effective number for us to be able to educate our students the way we want to? Or is 93 kind of the bare minimum and we're going to go up from there?
That was typically what the expectation was before the pandemic. So that's really a number that we've kind of relied on as the minimum number that you would want. But of course, you know, the.
Yeah, 100 is always the goal, but.
But it's a little unrealistic.
Jeff?
So I think I'm looking at a different document, but there's a document that's entitled WPS Action Plan 2022 to 2023. Is that an appropriate document to reference as well?
That, that is a document that this document references.
Okay.
But this is the document I'm working off of. It's the, it says superintendent goals on the top.
I got that one. I had both of them. But what attracted my attention was two things. One is, under attendance, it says student and staff attendance will meet or exceed 93% in each of the next two years. I applaud the inclusion of staff. I applaud it, okay? Do you have any idea what the staff attendance was for last year?
I can find that out. I don't have that with me today.
Okay, but thank you for including, including both.
Okay.
The second question I have is the under teaching and learning that says student achievement will meet or exceed the state level within two years. When, what it, so I assume that doesn't mean that the data we're going to get, and this is based on MCAS, I assume that doesn't mean the data we're about to get, okay?
Right.
So it would be a year from now?
That's correct.
Okay, so a year from now, when they show the state number for meets or exceeds, okay?
Correct.
Okay, you're saying that your goal is for that number to equal or be better than the state?
That's my goal.
Okay, so I have two questions about that. There are multiple grade levels, multiple categories. How is that going to be calculated? I want that clearly understood before we start using it as a basis for whether you achieve that goal or not.
Right.
How, how do you think we should calculate that?
Well, we can talk about all different types of ways to do that. But we can, the simplest way is to just average all of the grades they're meeting and exceeding.
Okay.
And that's what the state does do that. They'll say this is your, your three to, you know, three to eight and 10 average.
Oh, I didn't even know they did that.
Yeah.
So they average every grade as equal. Okay, fine.
They average it all together and you get, you can see one for the whole district.
For all subjects?
No, no, just for one subject.
Oh, that's my point. With multiple subjects.
Right, so. But really it's only ELA and math, so my goal would be for both of them.
Okay, so science and technology is not part of the calculation?
Not yet.
Okay, and this, and this is why I ask, because I don't want any, any ambiguity in terms of what this goal means.
Right.
Okay, so the average for all the grades for math and in ELA?
Correct.
Okay, all right. And the second question I have is, are the principals aware that that's your goal?
I've shared all these documents with all the administration.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, district improvement goal one. I would like to conduct a time analysis of our special education staff. And what I mean by that is I'd like to learn for each of our special ed staff, the time that they spend in classrooms or working directly with students, the time they spend in meetings, and the time that they spend working on paperwork. And I'd like to get an idea, and that's during the school day. It's important to me that we have our most qualified teachers teaching students. And so I want to see at what amount of time our special ed teachers are spending with, directly working with students.
That's K through 12.
K through 12.
April?
So in regards to that, and I don't, I don't disagree, obviously. I think that, you know, we are a unique district where our numbers in that, in the special needs department are significantly higher than a lot of surrounding towns. And I think that it is important to know how that they're spending their time, and I do understand that. What would a breakdown of that say hypothetically? That one of the more, usually the lead is the one doing the paperwork and doing all of that, you know, having been a sub, in a sub-separate classroom and helping with MCAS alls and putting them together and seeing all the work that that teacher put into that? What would your potential solution be to be able to get those teachers back into? Do you have that as like, is this, because I see this as a one-year, is this a one-year goal or a two-year goal? Because it didn't specify?
This is a, this is a one-year goal where, but, but you're, you're exactly right. What am I going to do with this information?
Right.
And, and, and your point is, is well taken. The teachers, our special ed teachers are required to attend IEP meetings. There is paperwork that they're, they need to complete. So I don't believe that I would ever, you know, have, be able to have them in the classroom all the time. But I'd like to get an idea of how much they are in the classroom and working directly with students. And then to your point, look at how we can increase it. What can we do? What type of supports can we provide that would free them up more so they can be in the classroom more?
So what I would like to see then in this goal is, I know the evidence is the analysis, you know, with recommendations for any changes in practice. But if that can be broken down a little bit more specifically as to, you know, the potential to roll it into a two-year goal? If it's, if it warrants it, just because whereas it's listed only as a one-year goal, I don't know that one year is going to, you know, just having that analysis is going to be enough to do anything with that information, for me.
I think, I think it's a great suggestion. And I'm, I'm happy to just roll it into a two-year goal, saying that we'll take this information.
But I ask you don't want to add more to your, you know, or to our, you know, to the, to the list. But I just think it's, given the, you know, the compilation of that population in our district and throughout the schools, I think it would be important to continue it instead of just get the analysis and then have it just be done.
Right.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I just want to put some, I think this is a very important thing to try to get a better understanding of what's going on with the special education staff, considering what we dealt with last year, you know, with the contract negotiations and then talking about all they have to do. I do want to say I think it's very important that it's not, this project is not disruptive to them because I don't want them to look at it as like, now there's one more thing we've got to do. We've got to fill out this, you know, survey or whatever, whatever mechanism you use. So just be aware of that, that's all, just, you know, I don't want to put any more on their plate.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you.
Jeff?
So, and I asked this question with pretty much complete ignorance about what the right answer is. When I audited the classes at the elementary school in particular, including inclusion classes and, what do they call them?
Subseparate.
Subseparate classes, there were a lot of people, a lot of different types of people who went into that classroom. Yes, there were teachers and yes, there were aides, but there were also therapists, occupational, physical, maybe even psychologists, et cetera. So how much of this documentation? You know, I come from the medical field where the saying is, if it's not documented, it wasn't done. I mean, that's how critical documentation is. So how much of this documentation can even be delegated? Can an aide, for example, make any notes into official documents? Are all of these subspecialists, are there, they doing their thing? And are they keeping their own separate notes of what they did? So I ask in complete ignorance.
Yeah, I, you know, that, and I don't know the exact answer to that, how much can be delegated? I think I'm going to have, that's something I'm going to be learning through this process. When we, when we get an idea of how much they are in the classroom, then, you know, if we are going to take some of the work off of their plate, what can we? And, you know.
Exactly.
And then, and, you know, I don't, I don't believe, I would say very small amount is able to be delegated. That would be my, that would be my feeling.
Which makes April's point that much better. Because I totally approve of making this a two-year goal. It's one thing to uncover exactly what's going on. It's another thing to decide what can we do about it, if anything? And that's, that's a worthy goal, but I don't think it can be done during the first year.
Right, yeah. And I, you know, I'll, I will definitely be reaching out to other districts, other superintendents and seeing if they have any thoughts and ideas of things they've done.
I mean, the more we can delegate, delegate, great. But my guess is probably not much.
Okay. District improvement goal number two is to really revise our grade level curriculum in all our grades in ELA. And it's not a complete revision. We are bringing in some new programs. And I would like to grade level teams to spend some time looking at what books we're using, what types of poems they're going to be using with the kids, nonfiction, speaking and listening activities, just to make sure that we're all, all the, the students in each of the classes are getting the same level of education. When we hire new staff, we can present them with documentation, showing them exactly what they're expected to teach. And I think this is just something that needs to be updated. And it's always, you know, good to do it every few years. And we'll just share up what we're doing.
This strikes me as huge. Is there a particular, what was the impetus for this goal? Did you observe something that, or were you told something that made you concerned and, and felt that this was an essential thing to do? Or was this something you just think, it's time to do it? You know, I don't know what I'm going to uncover, but it's time to do it. So which one of the?
I, I think it's time to do it. We are bringing in some new programs at the elementary level, at the high school level. And I think it's a very timely thing to do with these coming in, that we really put down exactly what we're going to be teaching in each of the, in each of the grades.
And these new programs, are they designed to solve a problem that you and Andrea have identified? Or is it this, you know, I won't use that term. Is this, you, the research suggests this might improve the results for our students?
So I would say, and I'm going to ask Andrea to chime in, but one of them I would say was to address a problem or support an area that we identified needs support. And the second one was really the teachers were looking for something, a resource that they could use that would be consistent across the grades. Is that, is that a fair way of saying it?
Nothing else to add?
I think that at the, because reading is complicated, particularly with the little ones, we've spent a significant amount of time in that area. And we needed then a way to also ensure that our students had access to grade level text that would also support their learning to read. And so, and then the application of that learning is the next step. So we've, we looked at many different, they and we met. It's been a two-year process really to look and see what would be best and how we could make sure that we had everything that we needed for all teachers and that it wasn't too much in one camp with, with the exclusion of another. So there's the whole, the reading is, the reading wars have been going on for a very, very long time. And what I'm trying to avoid is that pendulum eliminating high-quality text, for example, for the science of reading. Because then you're missing a whole lot of other things. But you also need the strategies and skills from the science of reading in order to have kids get, have the access to the skills. So it's complicated, but I think we've got a nice balance that will, that teachers have all agreed would be helpful for them. And then it's consistent from grade to grade and subject to subject. And we also blended two schools. So it was really important to see what we could do to make sure.
What does that mean, blended two schools?
We had grades, we had decas and mine it.
Oh, I see what you mean.
Come together. So we had, right, we had this interesting divide. And we needed to figure out, how do we bridge that? How do we make sure that throughout? And of course Bethany had a lot to say, as well as the department chairs, assistant principals, the teachers and their professional learning communities. It was a lot of discussion, a lot of back and forth, a lot of looking and analyzing all the data. The other program was attained through a grant, through this Student Opportunity Act trust grant on that I applied for. It's a $480-plus thousand, three, over three years specifically for the high school. And it's to provide them with the resources that they need to accelerate learning as a result of our MCAS results. So that was a very targeted, important initiative that. And the English department actually all agreed that they really, which never happens, I'm just saying. So they're very excited about the opportunity to start to integrate this, these elements into their, what they already do, so.
So do all grade level teams in fact have collaborative team time during the school day?
The high school will, the middle school has. And then what happens at the elementary is they've taken the day, they've created a schedule. So they have to stay after every, every week. And in that time, there are different meetings. And so what the, each of the department chairs, assistant principals have done is, and the, and the principal has delegated that time for collaboration. So yes.
Okay, thank you.
Just one quick follow-up. Are there budget implications, impacts to these new programs? I mean, I understand one of them is a grant.
They're all grants.
They're all grants.
Every bit of it. I have been busy.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, district improvement goal number three was also a two-year goal. The first was, the first year was to administer the school choice survey to families that had decided to choice out of the Wareham Public Schools. I shared that data with the school committee at the end of last year. There's a number of pieces of these goals that address what we learned from that survey. One of them is school climate, which is the year-two piece of this goal. We have conducted school climate surveys with students. We've, we've conducted school climate survey with staff and also with parents. So we have data. We, we will be getting additional data from the Department of Education once MCAS scores come out on staff, I'm sorry, on student climate survey. It's called VOCAL. And I'm going to share, I'm going to put that, that data together in a very readable format. And I'm going to share that with the principals. And I've asked them to bring that to their school councils to identify areas where there's challenges and areas of strengths and to develop some, a goal, at least one goal in their school improvement plan that addresses school climate.
Can they also have access in some form or another to that? The parents or the families that have opted out for school choice? Would that be helpful for them to see some of that information as well?
Absolutely, yeah, yeah. I have shared that and I will share that with them again.
April?
So obviously this is one of my favorite goals that you have because this has been one of my biggest concerns since I've been on the committee. So I, small anecdote, I had a conversation with a client the other day. And we were talking about how some of the electives that the high school offers. And they had no idea the comprehensive electives that we offer to our students. This isn't a person of a, of a more seasoned age who didn't have kids that go through our school, but pays taxes in the town, pays attention to town meeting, didn't know about the IB program, didn't know about our dual enrollment with Bridgewater University, didn't know about the AP program at the high school. I think that part of the school choice kind of conundrum is reputation. And I think people are making decisions before they, their kids even get to either a particular school or a particular grade based on old information, old regime, old teachers, old practices, or someone else's prior bad experience, you know? So I mean, I think that it would also be important to somehow put in the goal as like a community initiative. Like if there is a way to have a focus group with not just students or parents, but other community members, because we go to town meeting and ask this population for money to fund us, to support us, to do this. And if they're the ones that are looking at us disdainfully based on what they think they know and don't know where we are now, I'd like to include them in the conversation. Let them know, aside from the random thing that goes in Wareham Week where they get most of their information, or the rantings of a town Facebook group where people are just spiraling negativity into a giant snowball that turns into an avalanche that then, again, doesn't help anything. So I would like at some point, some sort of like focus group or community engagement, like reach out to the Council on Aging, say, hey, what do you guys know about the school? Bring students from these, the school councils to let them know what goes on in the town. So because it's not just the parents that are school choicing, it's the outside influence of other people in the community that we need to get to believe in the district as much as we do. Like it breaks my heart to hear when people say that they don't know how great. Like, it breaks my heart to hear when people say that they don't know how great our students and our teachers and our staff are, and that we are proactively looking to face the issues that have been, you know, gone through in the past. So I would like to see something in there where we can sort of utilize not just the school council, but other community thing, because I think that that plays a big piece in that problem. I don't think it's just school-specific.
That sounds like a great job for the Community Relations Subcommittee, Public Relations Subcommittee that you and Brennan are on.
I probably just shot myself in the foot with that one, but that's okay. I believe in it, so.
So I don't disagree with anything that you just said. I think that's all really important. I just want to remind everyone that there are community members on the school councils. So community members are coming into the schools, they are meeting with people in the schools. Of course, it's not the whole community, right?
Right.
And it is really difficult. I've seen lots of times, school personnel do so much work to put together a meeting for the community and no one shows up. So again, I don't disagree with you, I just, there's got to be a way--
If they don't show up to us, maybe we can find a way to show up to them.
Well, we, but we have tried, so when we were building the new school, that's a good example, right? We had consultants, we had all kinds of people here who put on these great meetings. Jeff, you know, Dr. Schwarm, we were all there. And you would think that people would come out to talk about the new school. And unfortunately, they didn't. So I'm, sure, that's a great idea, but we have to, I don't know, the setting, like Kevin said, maybe that's something that you and Brennan can find a different way to deliver that message, but it's a really difficult thing to accomplish, unfortunately.
It would be very helpful if we can.
Absolutely.
Right, absolutely, yeah.
Just to piggyback off that, I've got some ideas for it. But I think that, just in general, you know, we're kind of behind the eight ball. And part of the reason why I even ran for school committee is this very reason, that I know there's parents out there that pulled their kids from school because of something that happened before their student was born. I mean, the reputation sticks for, you know, good news, it's so hard to keep it up there. Bad news stays forever. And I think that we, you know, part of our job, I mean, everyone else has their own little piece of it, but I think that everybody working with the school, for the school, whatever, just needs to kind of do their best to put that out there, you know? Like, we do good news at the beginning of every meeting and it's, you know, a sentence or two, maybe one or two events. Maybe, you know, we all got to be bringing a little bit more. And I'm guilty of it myself. I get there and I go, wait, did I hear about anything in town this week? And we all just need to focus on the fact that we know what good the school can do. It's reflected in, like April said, the kids that are making dean's lists in schools. And, you know, what we're starting to do on the website with getting alumni and getting their stories in there. There's a lot of good that comes out of Wareham. We just, we're going to have to hammer the good home just as much as the bad was hammered home before. I think that's the only thing we can do.
So you mentioned the website, and they're really doing a great job on the website. There, you know, there's a lot of information on there and it's easy to see, it's easy to find now, it's updated. So, I mean, that is a huge improvement.
That's probably step one, is making sure we get more people from the community to look at it, even those that don't have, you know, don't have kids in school or not yet, or maybe before, you know? Even those parents whose kids are now in college go back and say, oh, wow, my kid had access to this in school? You know, it's, anything to change the reputation.
When you, you know, see someone that doesn't have kids in the school, you know, look on the website, all that information is on there. And it wasn't always there and it wasn't always so easy to find or to see.
I mean, again, anytime we do any kind of change, you kind of have to remind everyone. And they'll say, oh, I looked at it. Well, have you looked at it today? So that'll be our goal, April, this year.
And the other thing, too, is like, obviously, look at the, I mean, this is a workshop in the middle of the summer, I get, but our attendance at meetings, like, the public isn't as engaged as they were. I don't know if it's a COVID thing, I mean, the numbers even before COVID weren't, we weren't like, you know, it wasn't a stadium sellout for a school committee meeting. But I do think that, you know, it's important to hopefully try to weed out the keyboard cowboys and try to respond positively and proactively in addressing people's concerns and debunking any of the negativity that's being thrown out there.
So in this particular goal, and Dr. DeAndrea's, we're going to see some concrete steps in each school's improvement plan?
Correct.
And they'll be able to explain how it connects to perception or data from the surveys?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, and finally, is Professional Practice Goal. And this goal, what I, we went back and forth, the Subcommittee went back and forth and really shaped this, is that we will, as a district, identify focus indicators, much like I have focus indicators for my position when you guys are evaluating me, that will identify focus indicators for our teaching staff for the 23-24 school year. That would be working with the administrative team and the union to develop those focus indicators and having them be the indicators that we essentially really focus on when we're evaluating teachers, when we're going into classrooms. These will be the indicators that we feel will have the greatest impact on student learning.
Would that be by school or by district?
Well, that's a good question. I'm open to either one. I'm thinking district, but I'm open to talking about--
I mean, if one school thought they had a greater need in some area, or a weakness in some area that they want to address, that might be beneficial, that gives them flexibility. I can see maybe trying to make district-wide, but have some exceptions if they make a good case for them.
Right.
Okay.
Exactly. And that would, you know, the evidence for that would be, I'd be just looking at some of the evaluations, make sure that their, our focus on is, using those focus indicators, much like, again, when I submit my evaluation to you. And also, in classroom visits, I'll be looking at those myself. I'm going to, of course, be continuing visiting classrooms. Any thoughts, questions on that goal?
Get a good bang for the buck on the indicators you choose, that's all.
So that's a draft. I want to thank Joyce and Jeff for their, we spent a few hours talking about this. And then we, you know, went back and forth via email to shape these goals. So I really appreciate their help with that. And I'm happy to make the revisions that we've talked about this evening. And I'll just send them out again for a final look. And I believe, Mr. Chairman, that you're looking to vote at the end of August?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, we'll move on to a couple of school committee items here. First is, you all received a draft of the year-long school committee agenda. And this is just a draft, and every one of the committee realizes that they can request to have something put on an agenda at any time during the year. So just want to make you aware of that. But we're trying to create some structure. So Jamie, Dr. DeAndrea and I met a couple of weeks ago to come up with the general structure for the year. We followed similar format from last year in terms of timeframes for things. Just a couple of questions or points of order for us. Initially, and I think it's referenced in maybe the action plan, the superintendent's goals, it talks about principal reports being done monthly. Do we want to see as a committee, maybe a template that all the principals have to follow in their reports or not? And if so, I just want you to think about what might be in that template. We don't have to decide tonight what's in the template, but do we want some kind of format or not? April?
I do think it would make it easier, just for when they present data, to have them all be in the same format, regardless of what data is being presented. Like, if they're doing attendance, like, if it's a pie chart, everyone uses a pie chart. So we have like something more comprehensive visually, if they're doing something like that. Or like, if it's a graph, like, if they use like a similar model, then that would be the only suggestion that I would have, just because I think when you're looking at that data and you're trying to compare it school to school and it's structured differently, it kind of makes it a little bit more of a challenge to follow if they have something that's kind of, you know, a universal design for each one, even though it's going to have different information. I think at least for like my brain, it would help me process like, okay, this is what attendance data looks like at this school. Well, hold on, how do I compare that when this looks like this at this school? I think it would make it easier, in my opinion.
Yeah, that makes sense.
No, no, go ahead.
As I said, that makes sense because we're asking the same schools, the same questions for the same reasons. We're not asking the middle school about their attendance and the high school about their attendance with some kind of different purpose. So having it all in the same format would be helpful.
And also, Joyce, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, I agree, like, asking, you know, that they're going to give us the same information, but I would stop short of asking them for something in writing. I mean, I wouldn't want to add, they have enough to do. I wouldn't want to add to that. But, you know, just the information that we expect them to report to us, sure. But I just wouldn't ask them to give us a--
I think we should add a good news category to that, though. If we're looking for good news, the other ones on the ground, in the trenches.
So, yeah, a template would be good. I just wouldn't expect them to, you know, to submit a report to us every month. I'm sure they submit a report to you, or, you know, something like that. It's, you know, they report--
Well, no, that was only if they're presenting data, that that is presented in like a uniform format, not like necessarily, but just to make it easier. And that might be easier for them, too, then they're not like necessarily creating something from scratch if they have like a plug-and-play kind of an easier template to do, I don't know.
Dr. Schwarm?
Yeah, so I spend my life trying to make life easier for principals, so for this, that very reason. But it would be really helpful to know what it is you actually want to know, so that we can then, then I can say, without exception, like, there may be other conversations, but without exception, these are the things that the school committee is interested in learning from every school once a month, right?
Yes, absolutely.
And then I can create something and they can just plug it, they can plug it in.
Right.
That would be great.
So then, I would ask members to maybe share some ideas with me. You can email me some ideas and then I can share them with Dr. Schwarm. So we have something concrete that we can work from.
That'd be perfect.
All right. That seems easy enough.
Anything else in terms of the general format or questions people had? Do you think there's anything missing or do you find with the way it's been established? For now. Dr. Schwarm?
I came to present data at the last of the year, at the end of last year. And Joyce had brought up that I used to come to present data more often, but I hadn't been invited in a few, couple of years, anyway, to attend. So if that's something that you are interested in, it's not on the calendar at this time.
It is, I think--
Well, I mean, you're on the calendar.
Well, but it's not for data, it's curriculum. So anything specific to that would be helpful.
Okay.
I'm happy to provide it.
Well, I mean, so there's an MCAS report in October.
That's every year, yeah.
Right. But, I mean, so that includes data, correct? Because last year, it didn't.
Oh, yeah.
We, we had to ask you to come back again with the data, if I'm not mistaken.
No, I had a, I worked tirelessly on that presentation.
No, I'm not saying you didn't.
No, no, I--
I'm just saying that the data, it's, I don't know, you know, you know me, I don't remember what I did yesterday, but--
Me either, but--
There was a, there was a process to get more data, I thought, so.
Well, part of that was the state, too, was really, was not, didn't release it. Like, this year, they're on a much better schedule than they were last year. It was tough. So it was waiting, a lot of waiting, but--
Well, I guess what I would ask then, for the committee members, again, well prior to that MCAS report, when you have to deliver it for something like that, what is it that we want to see?
Yes.
To make sure that, you know, going into the meeting, this is what, maybe what we're going to ask, this is what we'd like to see, whether it's comparison to dark communities, comparison to state, whatever. That could be one thing we could do.
Yeah, because I guess, I guess a lot--
Now I remember what happened.
Okay.
So we had a special meeting just for the strategic plan--
Yes.
For the, for the school improvement plans from each school. And those did not include the MCAS data?
Right, because we didn't have it.
So then we had to, I mean, that was the first week in November, though.
Right, and it wasn't ready for, we didn't, I didn't have enough, by the time it was released and the time for that presentation, there wasn't--
Okay, all right, so--
I couldn't, I couldn't pull it off, so.
Jeff?
So the superintendent and by extension, the principals have some very challenging MCAS goals for next year. Do you have, do you collect data which will be able to tell the superintendent and the principals how they're doing against that? In other words, something that correlates well with MCAS?
We're, we believe that NUIA does.
So how often do you get NUIA data?
Three times a year.
Three times a year?
Beginning, the middle, and the end.
And the end is, is before MCAS is even--
It's after, because of the schedule.
I'm sorry, it's before, it's, yeah.
The January is before MCAS, oh.
I'm not saying when they actually perform MCAS, take the MCAS.
Okay.
I'm saying when it's actually reported, which is long after the end of the year. It's October or whatever, is when we actually get to see it, right? So, all right, forget that. What are the months when you would have NUIA data that you think would be, correlate well with how we're doing, likely to do against MCAS?
The end-of-the-year data for NUIA could help possibly predict the outcomes for this round of MCAS. So, for example, I'll have third grade results and I'm looking at those third grade results with the assumption that those third graders, when you see that data in October, will have correlated--
You just said you have it three times a year. Are you suggesting the first two times, it's not going to tell you much? And therefore, it's not going to tell us much?
It tells us a lot, but I don't know about the relationship to MCAS yet. So if I--
But it would show growth, potentially. And so we could see where they, like, I'm just thinking if you reported in middle of the year on what it was in September and what it is now in December.
Or even what it was last year at the same time.
Right.
Correct.
Yeah, something like that would be helpful.
So which months do you think would be, we should add it to the calendar, where it would be interesting data?
I would guess March.
Not until March?
Yes, I think that would be good. I mean, because you'd have two month, two testing sessions, you'd be able to see beginning and then middle, and then I'd be reporting where they, where they are.
I'll leave it to you. So I guess I would add a March, March NUIA data presentation. Okay.
All right. And we're adding the high school--
Makes sense, Matt?
It does, yeah.
And we're adding the high school this year to that, that assessment system. So I'll have a little bit of information there, too.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on that?
No, because we can always ask for more, right?
Right, yeah, absolutely.
Just making sure.
Okay. Next, we have the School Committee Protocols, which we adopted last year. There were the 10 protocols that you have in front of you right now that we've looked at in the past. Again, I would just focus our attention on number two. Our job as a committee is really to create policies, establish a vision, and ensure accountability to sustain continuous improvement in teaching and learning, focusing on students' achievement, and leaving day-to-day operations to the superintendent and the staff. I just put that out there. The other word that comes across to me in this is efficient, and number four, that we try to have effective and efficient meetings. I really want to try to do that and--
I'm going to hold you to that.
Any suggestions you have, I will gladly take. But I do want to try to do that this year. And we said as number nine, we need to review and revise these protocols as part of our yearly self-reflection and self-evaluation. So that's why we are, we are doing this. So when we met last year for the year, I thought we overall had a pretty good year. It seemed like the committee was well-intentioned and showed up and did the work. And so I want to thank everyone for that. I would make the suggestion, I think that we can basically stay with these. I think they're pretty strong, unless anyone has another suggestion of something we should do differently next year that we didn't do this past year.
The only, the only one on this I've ever took, taken issue with is, is number 10. And we all, that's not new information, so I will continue to not support number 10. But I do feel that the rest of the protocols are in line with our vision and our purpose and are very clear in what our, our goal is to ensure--
and are very clear in what our, our goal is to ensure that we have a, you know, a high-performing and respectful district. And I do want to also commend the public and everyone that did come to all of our meetings last year, that even in times with a lot of school committees across the country, we're dealing with a lot of contentious issues, that our, our community stayed very respectful of us, of each other mostly, and of our staff and students. So I think that says a lot for who we are as a community and who we are as a committee, and hopefully that will continue.
No, go ahead.
I just wanted to be clear for number five. The way I'm reading that is that that does not preclude me from responding to a parent, voter, whatever, when I get an email, but it does make it a responsibility to forward to the superintendent that communication that I got.
That's how I understand number five, yes.
It doesn't preclude me from responding?
No.
Okay. And, of course, there'll be times when I don't have enough knowledge to respond, in which case I'll just forward it over to you, and you can do with it as you see fit. But, excuse me?
That's rare.
I've forgotten this, but Kevin reminded me. This phrase, and this is my question to you, Matt, assure accountability to sustain continuous improvement in teaching and learning. How do you, how do you read that phrase? How do you interpret that phrase? That's quite a phrase.
Yeah, it is quite a phrase. Well, I would say, the way I interpret it is that you're holding me accountable. I mean, I'm the one that you guys hire and you need to go through, and that's clearly outlined in here, and so you need to hold me accountable to be sure that I'm holding staff accountable to, to do the job they need to do.
And yet, if we wanted details about how you're holding staff accountable, that, to me, would cross into the area of micromanagement.
Right, right, but.
And that I don't want to do and don't think I have a right to do.
But that's in his goal, in the evaluations and how they're doing it, so he's kind of putting it out there without us asking, so.
You know, the key is, you know, improvements in teaching and learning, and, you know, you have to, you're going to be looking at a lot of different data. I know MCAS being one of them, the probably the primary one, and we all want the same thing. We want to see that our students are doing well academically. And you have to, your job is to hold me accountable to that.
I hear you. I don't think it's an easy task for this committee to do, actually. I applaud the goal, but I'm trying to think of how I could do it without micromanaging. It's difficult. Well, go ahead.
I argue the other eight or nine things on this, is how we hold him accountable, and, you know, by following these, by following these other protocols is how we do it without micromanaging. Yes, micromanaging would be the easiest thing, but the best that we can do without doing that is by following these other steps, no?
I think it's more complicated than that, but I'll just, I'll give it some thought.
But I do think, as long as, if we can keep teaching and learning as our focus as a committee going forward, we get caught up in a lot of other things, but if we can always go back to teaching and learning, teaching and learning, teaching and learning, in a sense, we are sending the message that this is important to the community, and therefore it should be important to you and Dr. Schwalm and the entire staff of WAM Public Schools. So I think just making it our focus is one way. I know it's amorphous, but it can't hurt.
I'm sitting here thinking, is there anything I would like to hear from the principals on a monthly basis that would help me feel like their focus is on teaching and learning?
And so, then, if you want to, if you, as you think about that.
Thinking about it.
Send me something, then I'll share that with Dr. Schwalm, and we can go from there.
I will.
Yeah, I think that's important. Great.
If you can connect it to the evaluation, the focus indicators, then we can actually get data. It won't be specific, but we could actually have them report on something that they saw in the classroom that was good teaching and learning happening, right? And then you could see it.
Thank you.
So do I have a mo, oh.
I just wanted to say, you know that I'm in favor of all of these. And also, is it on the website? If it's not, I think it should be on the school committee page.
Yeah, we can put it on. We should put it on our school committee page.
Just a link to the.
Oh, we have to do our pictures, by the way, too. We'll take a picture at our August 31st meeting.
Our August meeting.
Where everyone has their nice suntans, so we'll take pictures of the group, and we'll put that on our webpage.
So everyone dressed pretty.
Good idea. But I think this is important.
Can't change the laser background?
Because some people don't know what the school committee is supposed to do. Some people think we have other responsibilities and other.
You think we're way more autonomous than we are.
Yes.
A hundred percent.
So I know for the few people that look at the website, but then you can direct people there also, so I think.
It should definitely be on our page.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
I just, I want to just thank all, the whole committee for, you guys have been vigilant on five and 10, and I can tell through my interactions with you that you have been, and I appreciate that, so thank you.
Because we bring so many complaints.
It's not so many, but when you do, I appreciate that.
So do I have a motion to accept these protocols moving forward for the next year?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, staying 5-0-0.
I already signed mine, so you can have it.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have to vote for a masked delegate and an alternate. I'm guessing we have a volunteer for the delegate, I'm just guessing.
I move that April be our delegate.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 5-0-0.
I don't know why no one else is excited about that.
I move.
I second.
Second. And do we have a motion for a delegate? I think we're all, most of us are going to.
An alternate?
An alternate, I mean, excuse me, an alternate to being a delegate.
Well, barring death, I will be there, so, I mean, although there was the one that I couldn't because they changed the date.
Just want to add, the protocols are not on the webpage. They're not on our page right now.
Well, first of all, are we all going? So you're not going, so you can't be the alternate.
I'm going.
I'm not sure.
Do we rock paper scissors for the alternate? Because that would be amazing.
But go ahead, because I don't know how many dates I can go.
Well, I would certainly move that Jeff become an alternate, if anyone would like to second that.
I'm counting on you not dying.
I will be. I took off the whole week. It's my, I don't know why I'm so obsessed with this conference. I come back so energized and so excited to bring stuff back to this district.
I'm going to tell Glenn Kucha all about you.
I think it's the greatest conference ever.
Oh, I love it. I just, I don't have it on the.
I changed my mind, can we get?
So we have a motion on the floor that Jeff made, Joyce seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Jeff being the alternate, say aye.
I didn't make that vote.
Oh, I made the motion, I'm sorry, I made the motion.
I seconded.
And you're not allowed to make the motion.
Oh, yes, I am.
No, he is, actually.
I am.
I thought you had to, to step back his chair.
Nope. Nope, Glenn Kucha told me that.
Oh, God, what have we created?
Oh, no.
I tried not to, but that one I thought needed to be made. So do we have a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's all right, Jeff.
5-0-0.
Because I will be there all those days.
Any other business, just the one thing I wanted to mention is that Dr. Schwalm and the administration is doing a review, reflect, and re-energize workshop on August 21st and 22nd, starting at 9:00 a.m., so day-long events, or two-day-long events. She invited two members of the school committee so that we could go and listen and hopefully contribute a little bit as well, reflect the community. I didn't want to just assign it, and I know people have jobs, so I know that's difficult. August 21st and 22nd.
I work both those days.
I did volunteer.
And I think Joyce volunteered as well.
I did, like, if you, I could do, is it all, it's all day? If I was able to go a half a day, would that be okay?
I think it will be, it's really a half, but the goal, the goal is to look at data carefully and establish the new goals for the next year. So your contribution is huge because that would help us during the time when we present our goals. The whole point is to have you there, is to have you contributing, so that you are clear on the goals, everybody is, so that we're all part of that conversation. And so I'm thinking the second day would be more about, the reimagine day would be more about creating the goals, and the first day is reflecting, and I have a slew of data, and I hope to include the survey data that you were also talking about, I just need the links. So they'll look, and we're going to split up into groups, and you being part of that would be huge.
Well, I would love to, but I can't do both days. So if you two can do both days, and it's better to have the same people both days so that, you know, they.
Well, if, why don't we just say that, I'm going to say that you and Jeff can go, but if you can't go both days, I can fill in for you that second or first day, if that's okay.
Sure, that's okay with you?
That's fine with me.
Yeah?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay, great. So, we're good on that?
What, what dates for them?
August 21st and 22nd.
21st and 20th. What, 21st and 22nd, 9 to 1?
21st is 9 to 1 because I have a meeting with a bunch of high school people at 1:00, and then the second day will be kind of different early, but it will be earlier, it will be later, depends on how, first of all, it's.
So I'm trying to get under the hour mark, I may make it, but we're close, anyway, so, oh, I'm sorry.